Going to call this meeting the Oskaloosa City Council to order. Today is Monday, November 17th, 2014. Can we stand and pray? Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, as we assemble here tonight, we thank you for the blessing we have of being part of this community together in Oskaloosa. We recognize your blessing comes with responsibility. And so our prayer is that each of us would be granted a humble spirit in all our deliberations, giving due consideration to the trust that citizens have given us. Please grant us wisdom, honesty, integrity, and high purpose. May the words of our mouths and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable in your sight. Amen. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Albury, Jimenez, Moore, here, and Zetton.
Yes.
First aid.
Here.
Walling.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the opportunity for community comments. This is item reserves for receiving comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. Community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. Asked to keep statements brief, time would be limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions that are to be asked of the city staff or council members or the mayor, we ask that that be done prior to speaking to the full council so that way we could properly research and perhaps even answer the question away from the full meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who would care to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is the consent agenda. I would like to ask the council if we could add a few more items to it. Received word today that items F, G, and H were accidentally put on the regular agenda when they should have been put on the consent agenda. Item F has to do with roughly one acre that is on the backside of seven lots. And so all that is, is giving permission to approve the final plat that adds that ground back to the lots. Then item G has to do with the appointment of individuals to the Mahaska County Solid Waste Management and also the Recycling Ad-Hoc Committee. And item H, these are appointments being made to the building code board of appeals where we have Pam Blomgren and Perry Murray being appointed. So is the council okay with doing that?
Yes.
Any other motion?
Yeah, let's do a motion, please.
Somebody.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
And Zetton?
Yes.
First aid?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. So that added to the consent agenda. These are all items that are routine in nature and so are typically passed with a unanimous vote. And so I would draw your attention that their item I is a resolution scheduling a public hearing amending of zoning ordinance for the city of Oskaloosa, rezoning the east portion of the property at 615 E Avenue West from Urban Family Residential District, which is an R2, to a limited industrial, which is an LI district. Item J is a resolution scheduling a public hearing on the vacation sale of a north-south alley adjacent to 211 North J Street. And item K, which is considering a resolution approving a professional services agreement between the city of Oskaloosa and Rohrbach Associates PC. This is for designing the fire station in an amount not to exceed $142,550. So, anyway, with that in mind, do we have any motions regarding the consent agenda?
It's a move.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
And Zetton?
Yes.
First aid?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on now to the regular agenda, item six, tag A. This is a presentation on the progress of the Oskaloosa Blue Zones Project. Miranda Cummings and Community Program Manager Natalie Ferguson-Spray. The podium is yours.
I have to think of Natalie here, so maybe I should put it a little bit down. Good evening and thank you for giving us time to share our quarter three updates for Blue Zones Project Oskaloosa. I'm Miranda Cummings, the engagement lead for the project.
And I'm Natalie Spray, the Community Program Manager.
For those viewing that are new to the project, we will give a brief recap before going into our sector updates. Oskaloosa, Iowa has embarked on a well-being improvement initiative that goes by the name of Blue Zones Project. One of 89 communities that applied, Oski is now a part of a select 15 demonstration communities in the state of Iowa that have either already accomplished or are working towards their goal of becoming a Blue Zones certified community. Throughout this presentation, you will have the opportunity to see the success that we have experienced in each sector, hear a few testimonials from those involved, and of course, take a look at the different photos we have taken to capture every special moment. We hope you will enjoy this presentation and we will be happy to answer any questions you may have at the end of the presentation. 1,370 represents the number of individuals that are not only interested in what Blue Zones Project is all about, but have taken the extra step by either signing up on our website or have made a personal promise to themselves, their family, or their work site to make a few changes, which everyone's worked best for their lifestyle, of course, that would not only improve their well-being, but maybe even add years to their life. Of these 1,370 participants, 1,011 of them belong to a designated or prospective Blue Zones work site. I believe this number is important because it shows the desire coming from our local employers to provide resources and information about improving one's well-being to their employees, which clearly got a positive response. MOI, a term that comes from Okinawa, Japan, one of the original Blue Zones areas, simply means five to seven individuals that share a common purpose or cause. Here in Oskaloosa, we have 21 organized MOIs, ranging from walking to potluck to group discussion around finding your purpose. Fifty-three presentation invites. That means that since the beginning of our time here in Oskaloosa, we have had 53 groups, work sites, or organizations ask us to come spend time sharing the message of Blue Zones Project and how they could be more involved. Calculating the attendance of those 53 presentations, we've had over 1,400 individuals in the community that chose to participate, engage, and interact with our team and our communities due to their interest in making the healthy choice the easy choice. 129 represents the number of individuals that have dedicated 1,250 hours of their time to this project. Whether it was helping to plant on the Greens Garden or preparing and serving food for the United Ways Day of Caring, this project would not have thrived without these volunteers and we couldn't be more thankful for their persistence and hard work. Volunteer Mahaska, a website developed in January of 2014, is a one-stop shop for anyone wanting to volunteer, donate, post needs, or list their nonprofit. One of the Blue Zones Power Nine principles is supporting volunteerism and incorporating it into our routines and lifestyle habits. With that being said, we are pleased to announce that the usage of this website has steadily increased by 34% since its original launch date. Now let's move on to work sites.
As of today, we have nine work sites that are designated as Blue Zones work sites. The great thing about our work sites is that all nine of them have exceeded the 25% goal of engagement for employees, with five exceeding 50% employee engagement. For example, Cloud got a very positive response with 80% of their 300 employees, which is pretty awesome. Each of these work sites have completed designation criteria in the areas of leadership, purpose, habitat and physical environment, engagement and creation of social networks, policies and benefits, and well-being solutions. Barb Finney, Senior Vice President and Regional President of Midwest One Bank, shared her experience, and I would like to read her quote. Midwest One employees have become more educated on food choices and are now trying more fruits and vegetables by patronizing the local farmer's market and reaching out to Michael Glessner, chef and Blue Zones Committee member, about food preparation and healthy recipes. We have also decreased our consumption of pop and are now selecting water or healthy drink options through our vending machine provided by Mahaska. Since becoming a designated work site, employees are trying new physical activities such as Fit Family Fun, 5K marathons, yoga, and lunch hour walks. Another testimonial I would like to share is from Mahaska Health Partnership Business Analyst and Wellness Committee Co-Chair Stephanie Falk. The Wellness Committee at Mahaska Health Partnership was active before Blue Zones Project came to Oskaloosa, and the project's team and support, creative ideas, have really invigorated our efforts. While changes are incremental, they are impactful, such as departments moving from birthday cake celebrations to free-in cheese and crackers. The team has helped us increase our activity and visibility among MHP employees by offering volunteer opportunities such as walking school bus and fun activities for our employees and their families, including yoga on the square and Fit Family Fun. From walking MOIs and successful potluck MOIs over lunch, employees are excited about being a designated Blue Zones work site. The Blue Zones philosophy has given our wellness committee and other avenues of wellness to explore, and the project team provides great resources. Our next sector is healthy foods. We have achieved two Blue Zones restaurants, Hunter's Coffee Cafe and On the Green, two Blue Zones grocery stores, Hy-Vee and Fairway, six cooking classes or demonstrations with 226 total participants, and four potluck MOIs. So let's start with restaurants. Hunter's Coffee Cafe has seen a 45.2% increase in their sale of lentil soup, a 5.5% increase in their sales of the carrot walnut sandwich, and also a 20.4% increase of sales in their chicken salad sandwich. On the Green has seen a 19.7% increase of sales in their healthy dessert option and a 19.9% increase of sales in their black bean burger since becoming a Blue Zones restaurant. The following is a quote from Shirley Hunter, owner of Hunter's Coffee Cafe. "We are certainly pleased to be a part of the Blue Zones Project. Our customers have responded in such a good way and always come in asking for our lentil soup and sandwiches. We have seen our sales increase with catering to local businesses as well. It is fun to see people want to be healthy and have healthier choices. It also goes along with our way of thinking. The chicken salad we have had for years is always popular, especially with the new whole wheat bread." Debbie Guild, Oskaloosa Hy-Vee dietitian, also shared her experience with becoming a Blue Zones grocery store. "Since Hy-Vee became a Blue Zones grocery store in June, Oskaloosa Hy-Vee has seen an increase in cut fruit sales and increased usage of the newly installed salad bar. At least twice a day, I hear from parents who love taking their kids through the Blue Zones healthy checkout lane. Other changes we have seen in our store is an increase in customer requests from the Blue Zones food list. Our dairy department has brought in goat's milk and the meat department is bringing in more varieties of goat's cheese. We also brought in the ancient grain farro. We have had multiple requests for different produce like fennel that customers want to The next quote is from Linda Vilcon, Oskaloosa citizen and a participant of the Fall Food Festival at the Mahaska County YMCA, a recent cooking class held during National Food Day on October 24th. In this quote, Vilcon states that she attended this event because it was a family activity that provided something fun for her grandchild to do while she could also attend something interesting. On top of learning a new way to peel a squash, Vilcon states that this experience was very exciting for her and she appreciates finding new ways of preparing more healthier versions of old favorites like honey baked apples. "The Oskaloosa Farmer's Market was a wonderful experience for all involved. Blue Zones Project Committee members and volunteers would join the market twice a month at both locations while incorporating activities that complemented the market as well as giving citizens more than one reason to attend. Here are a few quotes from vendors of the market as well as the market manager. 'The mission of the farmer's market has been in part to provide and educate the community on the nutritious value of homegrown fresh produce. Thanks to the Blue Zones Project, we were able to provide that. At times, the sidewalk in front of the vendors were so crowded, you had to walk around either on the street or the grass just to get to the next vendor.' Blaine Voss, market vendor, felt that more people came out and supported the farmers this season, and Blue Zones Project created more options for the local community. Palae Avrat Weaver, another market vendor, states that Blue Zones Project helped to promote healthy foods at the market by bringing in a chef and showing individuals different ways to cook the produce that was being sold, having kids' activities based on nutrition and exercise, and even offering yoga in the park." There's some yoga going on on there. Next, we're going to talk about education. "We've had so much fun designating the Oskaloosa Elementary School as the largest Blue Zone school so far in the project. A few of the pledge items we'd like to highlight include establishing a health and wellness council comprised of teachers, parents, a school nurse, and a local dietitian, changing recess to before lunch instead of after, which has really helped curb behavior issues, implementing two walking school bus routes consisting of 30 student walkers and 50-plus volunteers over the course of nine weeks this fall. One of my favorite testimonials that I would like to read is from a parent from the walking school bus. 'The Blue Zones walking school bus program was a welcome addition to our family's morning routine this fall. Between avid discussions about wildlife we encountered, to school subjects and friends, we were able to spend this time in a relaxed, low-key environment sharing laughs and insights with each other, as well as other parents and children. Students also work on life skills such as safety and common courtesy when using a recreational trail and crossing busy intersections, which is always a good reminder for adults as well. When my girls arrived home from the school last Wednesday, the first thing I heard was, ah, today was the last day of walking school bus, Mom. I can't wait until it starts again. It was so much fun. The candid response is proof enough that signing up for walking school bus was a great decision. I hope that more families choose to do this again in the spring.'" The mom was Kelly Carter, mother of elementary students Addison 5th Grade and Tierney 1st In closing, we hope that you read the full testimonials provided to you at a later date. We would also like to give a huge thank you to all of the individuals in the room who are helping our community and making this project successful. Through your kindness, persistence, and hard work, we have impacted over 15% of communities' well-being and personally cannot wait to watch the number continue to grow. Fit Family Fun, on Sunday, we had 40 families present and the room was bursting at the seams. And again, that program generated from interested individuals in our community saying that we're looking for things to do to, you know, help our family to be active, and it was a great experience to be a part of that. So we thank you for your time and we welcome any questions that you may have for us.
The walking school bus, did they walk from the school pickup bus site to the school?
So the walking school bus committee decided that we wanted to generate a starting point that didn't interrupt the bus routes for the first year. So we started at Lacy Sports Complex and used the recreation trail. So it was about a half a mile from the rec trail to the door of the school building. And then at the middle school, we used the YMCA and walked from the Y to the middle school.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So beyond item B, this is to consider an ordinance to vacate and sell a 60-foot by 16-feet of the north-south alley adjacent to 1002 North Second Street. This is the second reading. Emily Greenfield, the owner of 1002 North Second Street, has requested that the portion of the north-south alley adjacent to her property be vacated. The neighboring property at 701 North Third Street has an existing accessory structure that encroaches into a portion of the public alley, and therefore, the applicant just wants to purchase their half section of the alley. They want to purchase the alley for personal investment and property improvement. The city conducted a survey of the households with direct access to the alley. Of the residents that responded, out of a total of six, they all wanted the alley to be vacated. The portion of the alley contains Century Link Utility Infrastructure, so Eastman rights need to be retained for access to the above-mentioned utilities. The requested portion of the alley shows minimal public use, does not deny reasonable access to the abutting property owners. Planning and zoning, consider this item at their October 13, 2014 meeting, recommending by a vote of seven yes to zero no, that the city council approve the alley vacate request. Do we have a motion supporting this vacation?
It's a move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Are we, are they buying half of it or all of it?
Half of it.
So you're just trying to make... So what are we going to do with the other half?
Mayor Council, as we discussed last meeting, they have the right to buy their half, and if the property owner, the adjacent property owner doesn't want to buy their property, their half, this property owner can in fact purchase the whole thing.
Okay, but if they don't, it becomes city property, I should say stays city property.
It stays an alley for it.
Are you suggesting looking at a code change there if they...
Well, not for this, but it seems to me like we ought to get rid of the whole thing.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah. If I was the property owner with the structure on that alley, I would think very carefully like buy it now before the other, anybody else...
So how long do we give that person to buy his other half?
I don't know if there's any weather.
Yeah, there is.
Thirty days after the council approves the third reading.
So they have 30 days and then somebody else can buy it?
No, I can't, you can't, you can't, just anybody can't come in and buy it, right? That's why I say it ends up the city owns it.
Wait, I can't buy it after 30 days?
No.
You have to have man that touches it, right?
Right. But the neighbor next door to him could.
Yes.
The next-door neighbor can buy it if he chooses to, the structure, there's a structure which is already in that portion of the alley, so...
And that has to go for another three readings if he chooses to buy the other half?
No.
So he just comes in and does a quick...
Just comes in, does a quick claim on it.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
And Zetton?
Yes.
First aid?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Taking us to item C. Considering an ordinance amending the city code Section 10.48 pertaining to the requirement for the posting of signs prohibiting parking during a snow emergency, this is the second reading. Section 10.48.320 of the Oskaloosa Municipal Code says it's the duty of the police chief or city engineer to erect or cause to be erected appropriate signs giving notice when any parking time limit is imposed or parking is prohibited on streets or portions of the streets. Section 10.48.360 prohibits any person to obstruct the orderly removal of snow from the city's streets by parking or otherwise leaving unattended any vehicle upon any street or portion of a street when signs are posted on primary or secondary roads or at near their points of intersection with the corporate boundaries prohibiting on-street parking during a snow emergency. During the recent branding presentation, Roger Brooks had mentioned he noticed the drug ordinances enforced in snow emergency signs as he entered our city and how the signs detract from our city and possibly could be sending the wrong message to visitors. Staff is recommending approval of the ordinance modification so that the language in Section 10.48 would delete the requirement for the posting of signs prohibiting parking on city streets when a snow emergency is declared. Do you have a motion supporting this second reading?
It's a move.
Okay, any discussion?
So if there's, if you have a snow ordinance in effect and somebody doesn't bring your vehicle, do you have any ground to stand on? Jake?
Right now, the way we have been doing it is, number one, we just started doing public service announcements on the radio and we run those continually through the winter season. And we also just put a press release out regarding the ordinance and the rules of what to do if a snow ordinance is called by the city manager. And typically, what we, with the way the weather forecasts are now, we try to get a jump on it and we will reinforce this when we hear that there is snow coming. So, yeah, it's in the code where as long as the city manager calls it and we give notice via the media, which is what we do anyway, it's enforceable.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
First aid?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
And Zetton?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Takes us to item D. Considering a site plan for the property at 702 A Avenue West, it would be a new Taco Bell restaurant. Sundance Incorporated has submitted a site plan for a Taco Bell fast-food restaurant to be located at 702 A Avenue West. The site in consideration is a one acre and the present zoning of this property is UC, namely Urban Corridor District with A Avenue overlay. The applicant has submitted the required site plan along with elevations and a landscape plan for review through the city staff. The site plan illustrates a 2,298-square-foot building with the drive-through window along the east side. Proposed site will have one entrance from A Avenue and another entrance from High Avenue. New five-foot-wide sidewalk will be installed along both A Avenue and High Avenue with additional right-of-way to be dedicated to the city along A Avenue. Proposed sidewalk on A Avenue will have a 10-foot setback from the back of the curb. The site indicates a total of 27 parking spaces, and that includes two handicap-accessible spaces. Proposed site to be connecting to existing sanitary sewer and water utilities. Planning and zoning commission considered this item at their November 10, 2014 meeting, recommending by a vote of seven yes to zero no, that city council approve the site plan as presented. Does anyone have a motion to support this?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I have a question, I guess more of a policy question since Blue Zones was up here. Given the fact that they've given us a list of choices here, under choice one of the healthy eating-living policy, it says to establish zoning limits and density limits of fast-food locations. It even goes so far as to look at item number two, to prevent new establishments, new establishments from new drive-throughs and new fast foods. Scotty, you were at a meeting here on 5/13 of this year along with Joe. It's a committee meeting, and in there that you supported taking vending machines back to a healthy living standard, where we'd have to go in with vending machines passing ordinance through the city side that require at least 50% of them have healthy options with them. Why does that same rule apply to Taco Bell here? If I look at fast-food restaurants in general, shouldn't we be looking at good heating establishments versus fast-fooding, heating establishments?
Just so I'm clear, you're equivocating vending machines with restaurants?
Yes.
Okay.
If we have the power to limit how many candy bars are in a vending machine, why don't we have the power to limit how many fast-food restaurants are here? Because that's what they're asking for.
We do, and if you choose to vote against us, you may.
Okay, well, I just want to bring...
We decided at our meeting that we would encourage any new business that wanted to come to town to come to town, and that's not to say you can't go to Taco Bell and still get a healthy meal.
I'm just pointing out that there are four members here that support some of this. And Blue Zones goes way beyond what you can eat and what you can't eat. So Taco Bell, we're not talking about eliminating their drive-through. It's on there. We're not talking about getting rid of...
We're not for eliminating the drive-through.
I'm just bringing it up because they were up here before.
Part of the reason we love the Blue Zone is it'll encourage people to come to Oskaloosa and to settle here, just as new business law. And as I said, this doesn't mean you can't go to Taco Bell and still get a healthy meal, Jason.
Okay. But you can also go there and get a non-healthy meal, too.
Yeah, but same with that vending machine. Half of the stuff is healthy, but the other half may not be as healthy. You still have choices. Blue Zone is not for taking away your choices, it's just for giving you some healthy options.
That's not true because Blue Zones absolutely is, it's right there in black and white under this pledge. It's right there. They want to limit the density of fast food.
They may want to, but that's one of the options they gave us.
I understand that. I want people to be very, very clear on what's going on with Blue Zones under the whole Jonathan group, goober thing. We're not telling people what these choices are. I'm just bringing those choices forward because at some point, they're going to come back to us. And I want to come back to this because I want to know, I want you on record to say, oh, no, Taco Bell was okay, but you can't have a Snickers bar inside a vending machine. You can go, you can go get your bad food, you can get in a car and you can drive and go get it, but I can't walk downstairs and go get it.
Aren't downstairs, aren't half the options healthy? And aren't there other options that, what all is in that vending machine, Michael?
There were specific pledge items which we reviewed with staff for the work site to see if we implemented or not, and I don't believe for the vending machines that we picked that one particularly because, one, I mean, I think we can, there were other discussion points, obviously, one, this council seems to be very divided about that particular item. We suspected that would be the case. So we didn't choose that particular option to proceed, but I think common sense would suit us. say we could slowly move towards that and implement it here at our facilities or whether it be here or even at the pool. I think that's something that I plan to look at with our staff and see if we can make some changes to the products that are being sold out there regardless of whether or not this, this group or as we as worksite have pledged that item or not.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, it seems easy enough, you start with the worst sellers anyway if you were making replacements.
Yeah.
But what we're really here to talk about is the site plan for Taco Bell.
Yeah. What I'm for.
Yeah. Any further comments on the site plan?
Looks pretty good, actually.
Roll call please.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
For stay?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on to item E. This is considering the site plan for property at 814 North H Street. It's a three-unit townhouse apartment complex. Anthony Vermeer has submitted a site plan for a three-unit apartment complex to be located at 814 North H Street. The site in consideration is .32 acres. Present zoning of this property is R2, which is Urban Family Residential District. The applicant has submitted the required site plan for review through the city staff. The site plan illustrates a 3,045 square foot building with three separate dwelling units. The proposed site will have one entrance or exit from North H Street, site indicating a total of seven parking spaces, which includes one handicap accessible space. Proposed site will be connected to existing sanitary sewer and water utilities. And at their meeting on November 10 of 2014, planning and zoning commission by a vote of seven yes, zero no, recommended approval of the site plan with the following stipulation, namely that it provide a lighting plan to demonstrate lighting for the off-street parking. So do we have a motion supporting this site plan?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on it? There you go. Roll call please.
Yates?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
For stay?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. We took care of items F, G, and H through the consent agenda. And so with that, takes us to item I. Is to consider a resolution stating support for the Oskaloosa Water and Wastewater Working Committee and their pursuit of creating a joint management agreement for the provision of utility services. The Water and Wastewater Working Committee, the WWWC, was formed in the fall of 2014 for the purpose of reopening discussions and exploring partnership opportunities between the city of Oskaloosa and the Oskaloosa Municipal Water Department. This committee is committed to efficient and effective utility service provision for the betterment of the Oskaloosa rate and taxpayers. Members of the committee include myself, council member Jimenez, council member Yates, water trustee Ryan, water trustee Vore, and staff Chad Kuhn and Mike Schrock. The committee has hit a critical point in its discussions and is seeking input from the city council by way of a formal vote on the following recommendations. Number one, create a management agreement for services between the city of Oskaloosa and the Oskaloosa Municipal Water Department. Sub-A, management agreement creates the service management and delivery team, which is noted below, outlines minimum service levels, creates performance measures, and formalizes the future relationship between the city of Oskaloosa and the Oskaloosa Water Department. Item B dictates that the wastewater services will be provided as a unified service with water by way of a specific contract terms. Number two, expand the Oskaloosa Municipal Water Department membership from three to five appointees. Number three, designate up to two city council members and the city manager to serve as ex officio, that is, non-voting members who will assist the five-member water board by consensus building in managing operations on behalf of the city of Oskaloosa as a service management and delivery team. Number four, establish a director-level position with the authority to oversee, plan, and direct the long-term vision as well as the day-to-day operations of the water and wastewater utilities. And number five, continue developing the management agreement between the city of Oskaloosa and Oskaloosa Water Department, which is recognized by formal resolution adoption of the city council. You can see the resolution in our, in our packet. So do we have a motion supporting this resolution?
Second.
Discussion?
Mayor Council, I follow my memo, I had a visual, which apparently didn't show up in the conversion of the document for the leadership, so there is, visually I have a leadership team that's shown here, that shows you this information as it's described. So I apologize, I can certainly get the document if you need to see it downstairs.
Is there any way to pull it up on the computer, Mike? Is it about a tree?
Yes.
I'd have to go get downstairs and get it.
How many businesses have we talked to about things?
Single director.
Yeah.
Well, the ones represented around the table probably was it.
I would move on to that.
Same thing.
I think I need some more time with this myself. My concern is where the votes come from, and I was talking with Councilman Yates about that a little bit earlier. We just got done fighting the water board. Now essentially, we're going to throw them the wastewater keys and we have no votes here. We have no votes at the table. That's where my concern is, is we're just, we're just there. So I want to get back to a point where we've got some say that we would have some voting power there.
So, so I guess I'm thinking that we would be making two more appointments so that no longer is it a three-member board but a five.
With your water board, that's correct.
We've also demonstrated a certain amount of power in, in removing, if need be, members who we don't feel are serving satisfactorily.
Okay.
So I'm thinking that the council's voice would be heard.
There's no guarantee that they're going to be heard. That's...
The other...
And where I was going after this was before, is this should have been a referendum because then you could have eliminated both the water board and utility board and had equal voting members on both of those. Right now, we have no say. The only say that we'll have in this at all is I'm assuming that, as Councilman Yates said, if we start to split ways again and this thing doesn't work out, that we can kill that management agreement and take it back.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about in our group, the agreement would have to work for, for all parties. Most importantly, it would work for our city and that being the citizens. But it would be an agreement that would be entered into between us and the, and the water board. And if it's not defined, we wanted to bring it to the rest of the council and see if we were headed in the right direction because if we're not, we don't want to be spinning our wheels. But we would enter into it and if it didn't work, then we would, we would get out of it.
The citizens don't have a vote at the table on their wastewater that's given all the power to the water board. You're going to expend...
They voted for us.
You're going to expand...
They asked us to manage the city, so we're trying to do that.
I understand that, but you're giving up the votes to the water board.
I don't look at it as giving up, I look at it as we're trying to work with another entity to try and make a more effective way to run the water department and the wastewater together.
Who is going to be the managing director over there?
If we go down this route, we will, that'll be part of...
Okay, so let's say, let's say we go down that route. Who are the voting members for that director?
The water board.
Five water board members.
Appointed by the mayor, approved by us.
By the mayor, approved by us, therefore we're going to let the water board elect a wastewater director for the city. We have no say here.
Well, you have contracted performance measures that have to be hit.
I'm just, I'm looking, I'm looking at the past history that we've had here. There's no way that you're stopping what, what we just went through, other than the power of removal that we had to go to court to seek.
But we have a three-member board, two of which are new, there would be two more added to it. I mean, I don't consider the history, we need to learn from it, but I don't consider it relevant in the direction we're trying to go.
No, I think it's absolutely relevant. And it's absolutely relevant, it's absolutely relevant in the way to protect the citizens of Oskaloosa to make sure that they have a vote at the table, not to give it away.
We do have a vote at the table.
Yeah, they do.
We're sitting here and we're going to appoint those people. We're also stopping all the stuff in the past and we're going to move from this point forward with new direction and, and new management skills.
Why couldn't, you know, I, again, I would say that we need to be able to have a voice at the table. I think we have to have some voting power there. Under their terms, we can't be on their board.
They have a contract that we're being into.
You have a contract and the only power that you have is to step away, is to walk away from it.
We have a schrock that's also overseeing everything on this part.
Yeah, I think one of the things that, again, the visual would help is that while it doesn't give you a vote per se at the table immediately, is that the five-member board would be assisted by up to two council members and the city manager would sit there and through consensus building. And the idea is that there's going to be mutual respect amongst the group and that there's going to be decision by consensus, but ultimately legally could be made by the water board. But I think with that type of partnership, there's going to be decisions that are made probably more in line with what this council and future councils would like to see. What I, what I also would recommend is whatever agreement is established, there's going to be a lot of input in setting that standard and that's what you, US council, I mean, as your manager, would help define before you entered into it.
And this is not approving the agreement.
No.
The agreement that we're going down the path and get any formal agreement, any of metrics, those things, so a lot of work has to go into that.
I like what has been done here and what I also like is what he said about partnerships and moving forward as partners to have a better service and a better way to deliver this, and I thought this looked really nice.
I don't disagree from that, but we have to be smart enough to see what happened in the past and make sure we're protected for the future. And we're not right now.
And I think some of the discussion points that, the discussion points that were held were specifically on that issue of, okay, what happens if you send this out to a referendum? Do, do we as an organization, do we as a community think there's enough knowledge and support to even go forward with a referendum? And I think the group as a whole agreed that now wouldn't be the time to do that.
Correct.
There just wouldn't be, there would be confusion about what was happening and I think there's an expectation that given the lawsuit, which they sued us and, and we had to defend the mayor's action, there's some, there's some expectation that there'd be an attempt to work together. Now, again, US council have every right to try to put a resolution on the table to send this out, but I don't, as your manager, don't think it would pass. Not now. And so I think the group was interested in trying to see if this could work and maybe even down the road, there could be a referendum that's submitted to the voters with the full support of the water board and the committee members that are assisting here.
Does this need a vote?
Supporting the resolution.
Just supporting, just see where we're going, make sure we're going the right direction. That's what we're looking for. We're not done.
There's still...
This is just the support, the direction you're going in.
Correct. And what I'm doing is I'm trying to stop wasting everybody's time if we need to do that or if we're willing to invest more time, then I think the group as a whole is committed to that, but we've been meeting every Thursday at night trying to figure out what would work best. And then I think what we're concerned about is that the elephant in the room is what's council going to say as we proceed, so we're checking in.
Well, I find it interesting that we didn't put it on a referendum of saying, why didn't we ask the public, should we add wastewater over there? Why didn't we separate it like we did the water board? We're not asking that question. My only concern is, I like the way you guys are going. I just don't like the fact that we're protected and we're only protected and I just want to make sure that this management agreement can die at any time.
I would think, I, here's, here's what I would say to that in response. I think you have to be really careful about what type of relationship you're entering into and anything that could be changed on a whim is not going to have much chance for success.
Okay, so then, let's say we want to kill this. Who are the voting members then that's going to kill this management agreement?
I think the two parties, the water board of trustees and the city of Oskaloosa proper would be the ones that would be discussing that. And there would be specific provisions within this agreement. Now, mind you, we haven't drawn this up, so I haven't given much thought to it.
Okay, so this isn't the agreement, you're just talking about the direction here.
This is the direction that we're, we're attempting to go and if there's just flat-out disdain for it or you don't want to go with it...
This is just, you guys are just moving the direction, there's no formal resolution. Here's the thing, if you're going to kill this and you have no votes, how do you get it back? You can't just bring it back here and kill it then.
And I'm more than happy to try and explain what we're doing and all that, but I'm not going into it planning to kill it. I mean, you have to have a provision to get out of it, but we got to go into it with some thought of trying to work together and move this forward.
That's fine.
And, and I agree, there's got to be an out, but I don't want to spend all my time worrying about the out at a point where we don't even, we're not even getting into the language of the agreement. We're trying to figure out, do we as a council want to continue moving forward and working with them? That's where this is at right now. It's, the language has, I mean, there's pages of language left here. We're not nowhere near to that point.
Well, before I get married, I'm going to talk about a prenup. And that's, that's what I'm saying, I'm trying to, if you're giving away the votes, I just want, I just want to know as you move forward.
I don't either.
If we want out...
There'll be an out.
How is the out? And it can't be up to the water board, it has to be up to us. You have, you have to protect us and the citizens on us. And that's what I'm not hearing right now. All I hear is we're giving votes to them.
Okay. Okay. I can say it for the maybe fifth time, there'll be an out.
All right.
Okay? The first four times, maybe I didn't say it clearly enough, but we will try and have an out or we will have an out before you vote on anything that's an agreement for this council. I'm not going to allow us not to be protected either, but I still think there's a whole lot of that, you know, us trying to work together with them, having a single director, cutting costs for the city, all those things that we've talked about that we want to do to protect them. We need to be protected, I absolutely 100% agree with you, but I see this as an opportunity to do that. I also, before we're finished, I want to make sure that for the other members, they can have their own say, but for Joe Ryan, Mike Vore, Chad Kuhn, I mean, we've had some very good discussion, very open discussion, very positive discussion, how we can move this forward. And it didn't start easy, but we've been able to progress to that. I have full confidence that we can move this further along to benefit of the city.
And I'm very hopeful that it will help us lead into the fact we can keep it in-house.
Yes.
Yes.
Amen.
And that is part of the discussion as well. Yep. Been a lot of the discussion, actually, making sure that we stay...
It looks like a lot of work went into this and a lot of big thought. Can we talk to a question?
Yeah. Just waiting to see if the graphic would show up.
So what exactly is the motion here? That we're just moving forward with the generalizations?
If we're going to move forward with this.
And this direction.
Just the generalizations.
Yeah, very general direction.
So I'm not committing to anything other than you guys re-meeting.
That's right. He wants to keep working on this path, really. Because, I mean, that's what we have been trying to meet every week to keep it moving forward. We know we got some issues with wastewater we talked about. And if the council view for it was to stay separate or to go a different direction, we wanted to hear that before we continue making and keeping the push forward.
And weekly meetings are time-consuming.
Yes, they are. But it's important enough to us to...
Well, no, I agree. You know me, I say all they, they want to do is flush or turn on the dab, so that's it.
So we're not giving anybody any votes or anything yet, correct?
Nope. Nope. And it's been very frank discussions as well. I mean, it's been right to the point on everything, so we are moving forward.
Yeah, and I think that's what I appreciate the most, is that there has been some very candid conversations happened where folks have been very blunt with the way they feel and the direction that they want to go, and that has, has been a very nice, trusting environment to be in, where now we can be honest with one another. We don't, we do some diplomatic language, but not much lately, and it's been because there's some cohesion getting started and people unifying their vision of what direction we want to go.
As long as I'm clear, this isn't binding us in any way.
Nope, just a resolution to support.
I'll make sure everybody gets a copy of that. I apologize. I don't have it.
Well, it wasn't something, but I know it's...
At some point, it won't be binding.
Oh, yeah.
Was it a minutes or something?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions?
Have we talked that one enough?
Roll call, please.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
Forsteh?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Kind of passes, moving on. A report on items from city staff, city manager.
Mayor and council, with the approval of that item, that means that our next meeting is Thursday at 5:00. So just a reminder. In addition, we've got an update on Emerald Ash Borer, the work that the staff has been doing on trying to deal with the expected impact of the Emerald Ash Borer. Recently, the city was a recipient of a grant from the Department of Natural Resources to help us with that process, and so Dylan's going to give you a quick presentation about our efforts to date and then what we can expect going forward.
Thank you, Mike. I've worked with Oskaloosa Trees Forever, and we found this opportunity to work with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources on this urban forestry grant. And basically, what's going to come in is the Iowa Department of Natural Resources comes to Oskaloosa and provides 40 hours of intensive training. This is focused around staff, it's focused around volunteers, and there's also a portion for our council, which mostly pertains to our current tree ordinance that we're doing. The whole idea behind this training is just to get us prepared for increasing our urban canopy, that is, our trees in the right-of-way. They offer many benefits, from environmental to aesthetic to our city, and we need to start working towards that. As you can see, the Emerald Ash Borer is a big issue in our city, and we're going to be removing a lot of trees. You may not see the effect now, but once it does take, there'll be a lot of empty streets out there. And our whole goal here for Oskaloosa is putting in the right tree in the right place. I think that's so important because we have utilities underground, above ground, and a lot of different things that are affected by the trees, and we want to get the good ones in the right-of-way, the ones that provide enough shade, but also are easy on our wastewater systems and our stormwater. So I think that it's an exciting opportunity for the city. They're going to be coming in next week, starting with a three-hour course for our staff, so we'll be working with them and then bringing in Trees Forever. And really, it's just going to get us prepared for making trees a successful resource for Oskaloosa, for, I would say, for the next generations to come.
So why don't you explain the map, then?
Oh, sorry. So currently, the map right here is the City of Oskaloosa, and we started in the northwest region, and we identified all the ash trees within there, and we removed 15 of them, and we ranked those as poor condition. They were either close to utilities, they were currently falling down, or they were blocking a sign or blocking something significant. So that's how we rated the trees. We're going to do a clockwork around the city, so next spring or fall, we're going to start in the northeast corner of Oskaloosa, take down the poor-conditioned trees, and work our way by taking down poor, and then working up to fair, and then going to good. And our goal is to replant every tree that we take out, so we're either going to be doing that in the city right-of-way where it's appropriate, or we're going to be replanting it in the park. Currently, as you can see, Edminton Park has 53 ash trees, so we really need to do our due diligence in Edminton Park and bring some trees back there, a lot of shade for people enjoying the park and the disc golfers. So we're working our way on that map, and it's just going to be chipping away. You can see in the CIP that we're hoping to allocate around $40,000 a year to remove these trees, and that's for the next four years, and that'll be removing and replanting. And we'll be working our way in the spring and fall during the appropriate times to take down trees, so...
So it doesn't matter the condition, other than the state of the order, all the trees are going to be removed?
Basically, what I read in the research I did said that they are still great trees. I mean, they're still living. It takes four to five years for them to fully feel the effect of the Emerald Ash Borer and die. So if we can prolong a couple of them and really enjoy the tree's life until then, that's kind of the system we're going at right now.
Right.
The short answer is yes.
Ultimately, they'll be removed.
Ultimately, they would all be removed, but that's why we're trying to target the ones that are poor first, so that we can try to get some extended use out of them.
Is it really a project or a...
Oh, it depends on funding.
And then I'm assuming you're not going to go back and plant ash trees?
That is correct. We're actually working towards a variety of trees. The last tree survey we did had about 50% maple trees, so we're trying to get away from that as far as possible because it's just a matter of time before something would occur with maple trees, so...
It's a lot to draw. Everybody replanted ash for the ill, but they didn't know ash was going to get it. So I mean...
And that's something we'll work with our, when the DNR comes in, diversifying our species, that's one of the main classes, so...
I'm a tree hunter when it comes to cutting them down, so I like that, you're not cutting down a healthy tree and tell it, show some signs, because the two seminars I went to, you're hurting anything by leaving that life-happy tree there, if I understand.
That's correct.
So we talked about four years in here, it looks like, $40,000 a year. So $160,000, does that get all of this done and the Edminton Park, or is it more than that?
Edminton Park would be completed with city staff, so we don't plan to use contractors for that, but the rest of them, I'm assuming that $40,000 was based off of what you projected to complete all of them, right?
Yeah. We estimated around $1,000 a tree, that could change with the market, but that's our estimations for that and the replanting, so...
I know we go older than a productive forest cemetery.
No.
We have not.
No. No, the assessment was in public right-of-way.
This takes care of the city's right-of-way trees. Is there any kind of a public education for folks who have their own ash trees on their own private property?
We do have some resources on our website that point people in the right direction for going to try either treat their ash tree or remove their ash tree, so they can always look into that. There's a lot of material on the websites. As far as the city service or any type of education being provided, one-on-one with that, we haven't developed anything yet.
Okay. Well, just the website alone, I think, would be good. It sounds like a real good start, so, sounds good to me. Northeast corner is the first one, then which quadrant would come after that?
We started in the northwest, and then we're moving our way to the northeast, and then southeast and southwest.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dylan.
Thank you.